Welcome back. And you're tuning into Focus. And the April 2, 2019 election is quickly upon us. And so we have chosen to bring the candidates and the school board candidates to have a 15-minute segment on why they are running for the school board. And our next candidate here is Ms. Jessica Green. Welcome to Focus.
Thank you for having me.
First, tell us, who is Jessica Green?
Jessica Green is a mom of four. She is getting ready to be a full-time student. I currently am a youth leader in my church where I direct the praise dancers for the youth and an advocate for our students.
What was the epiphany that led you to say, "I'm going to run for the school board"?
Well, I grew up in this district, and so I can think about all the issues that I had within this district. And when I talk to parents who have children in our district, they're not happy. And I actually didn't even realize that it was time. And I don't ever read the Sunday newspaper. So I get the Sunday paper for my coupons, and that's it. Well, this Sunday, I happened to be skimming through the paper, and I saw that, and a little notification, that it was time for school board elections. And they had the dates and the times to sign up. And so I thought to myself, "Man, I thought about it for a couple of days." And I just was like, you know, this is probably a sign that this is something that I should do, that I should really try to go for.
The various forums and interviews that you have participated in since you started your campaign, what have you learned from those environments?
I've learned that diversity is a question that people have across the board. I've also learned that talking in front of people isn't as easy as I thought it was. Explaining where you stand and trying to get other people to believe in what you stand for is not the easiest thing, so.
What experience and expertise will you bring to the board?
I'd say my biggest expertise would be the idea for the minority children, poor minority children, has been a topic that's come up. And I'm an expert in that because not only do I work with them when it comes to our church, I was them. I mean, I grew up in this district. I was a poor minority child within this school district, so.
Looking at the school overall, what grade would you give the system as to safety? And how would you suggest the system go about improving overall safety for the school system?
I'm not sure how I would grade them. I would probably give them maybe like a B because I think that when it comes to safety, at least in my experience, getting into our schools, it's not easy to do. I had one school that my daughter used to go to wanted me to make an appointment to schedule, and then they only said you could be there for just 30 minutes. So I think as far as safety goes, our schools are pretty safe for the most part. Now, something I would improve on is just the idea that maybe, and when I was in high school, we had an officer that walked our school. I mean, he wasn't there to be intimidating. He talked with us, he spoke with us. And I think that that's something that maybe the schools could utilize, is they don't have to be there necessarily all day, but maybe just a rotation of officers that are coming in and out just to make sure that things are okay.
As you think about what you've heard overall and your observation of the system, what would you say are the top three issues confronting the Jefferson City School System? And what would you do as for as immediately addressing those issues that you identify?
The first one is diversity and inclusion. Of course, that's, like I said, that's been a huge topic. That's a huge concern of everyone. And that gets addressed with, I believe, bringing someone from the outside to look at the hiring practices. And it also starts with making sure that our Board of Education building is diverse as far as race and culture is concerned. The second one would be discipline and how we discipline the students and the type of consequences we give them. One of the things that I don't necessarily agree with is OSS. I said that I didn't agree with ISS either, but a friend actually gave me a different outlook on ISS, so I would definitely say that I don't.
Okay, for the individual that don't understand what ISS is.
Okay, so you've got in-school suspension, which is where they just take the child out of the classroom for a few days, and they put them in a separate classroom where they can do work. And that's where they're confined to is that classroom, which makes sense because if you can't behave in your classroom or you're struggling with being in your classroom, then let's take you out and see how you can do. OSS would be out-of-school suspension, which is where we put kids out of school and we send them home for a few days. With OSS, the reason I don't like that is because if you have a child who's got abuse or anything like that going on at home, then you put them out of school, and we're sending them into an environment that's where things that are not good are happening. And then some kids want the vacation to be at home. They like to be away from school. So I definitely would want to look into ways where we could redirect and maybe find some alternative ways to punish them per se instead of just kicking them out of school.
So you spoke about discipline. Looking at the discipline policy, once on the board, what would your recommendation be?
One, my recommendation would be, I don't think we should have like a, it shouldn't all be the same. You know, so let's say you have, for example, if you have two students who are fighting, and then you just decide, "Well, we're just going to put both those students out of school for a week." Well, I don't know if that's necessarily fair because if you have one student who was the aggressor, and the other one was like, "Listen, I've tried to walk away," and this other student kept coming, so I was faced with, you know, fight or flight. Do I defend myself or continue walking away hoping it'll stop? So I wouldn't put a standard on everything. I definitely think that policies should look at each case by itself and see exactly what each student's disciplinary action should be.
What is your position on zero tolerance?
I don't know if I like zero tolerance because, let me give you an example. My brother is in middle school right now, and so they implemented this zero tolerance for horseplay. And I mean, he's a seventh-grade boy, and I'm like, "What is horseplay like?" So if him and his friend are like in the hallway, like, you know, ruffling around, which I'm not saying they should be doing, but if they're ruffling around, is that necessarily cause to be like, "Nope, we don't play around like that, so you're straight to ISS or you're straight to OSS"? And so we definitely shouldn't have a zero policy because there are some things that are just normal behavior for kids at certain ages.
Going on to the school board, you are working with a group of individuals who, some who've been on the board for a while, you yourself and one other person would be new coming on the board. What is your position and how will you ensure that you don't fall into the group think?
I've always been an individual thinker. It's definitely not easy to get me to just follow along with what the crowd is doing. Now, I do believe that if I was to be elected to school board, I am definitely open to learning from those who have already been there and experienced it. But I would hope that everyone would also be open to the new fresh face and the new fresh ideas that are coming along.
Can you tell me a time when you displayed leadership which resulted in a group or an organization that you was involved in going in a different direction because of your leadership?
Man, I'm trying to think. That's hard. That's a hard one. Let's see. Well, so I know that with being a youth leader at my church, there's a team of us, a group of us. And so we put together services every year. We put together these youth services. And I remember a few years ago, I wanted to do a service that wasn't necessarily so time-restricted, and maybe someone didn't come and preach a 30- or 45-minute message. And so me and along with another teammate had came up with this idea that we could just have a service of just worship. Not everybody thought it would work, but me and again, another partner that's in our department said, you know, "We should just really give it a try." And so we convinced the rest of the team to give it a try, and it actually really worked. So we created our Frigance of Worship service that we do every year, so.
Okay. You spoke about diversity. How would you go about addressing the issue of diversity as you have alluded to? And how does retention come into play with that?
Like I said, you address diversity. I know that our HR department has said that they're looking at their hiring practices, but you guys are the ones who are doing the hiring. So someone else should come in to look at what you're doing and determine if what you're doing is actually working or not. When it comes to retention, I'm not sure exactly why minorities would leave or things like that because some of that, a lot of that isn't like public knowledge until you hear about a lawsuit, and then things start to spill out. But I think teachers just really need support. They need to know that when they walk into their school building, they are supported by their staff, they're supported by administration, and they're supported by parents. Because diversity isn't the only thing that causes retention to be so high like it is. So there's a lot of things that factor into that. But again, dealing with diversity, it's time for someone from the outside to take a look at what our HR department is doing.
Before your closing statement, is there anything that, in your preparation for this interview, that you said, "I'm going to make sure that I address this"?
I actually recently was able to speak with a parent who has a senior right now who was a special needs child. And so that is something that hasn't come up in any of the forums so far, any interviews so far. And so that's something that I really want to add in and really focus on and figure out where our district is lacking when it comes to dealing with our special needs children.
Okay, okay. Well, it's time for your closing statements. If you can look in the camera and convince the citizens of Jefferson City why they should put a checkmark by your name.
All right. So put a checkmark by Jessica L. Green because I am a fresh face, I am a new face. I have been through this district. As a student, I am now going through this district as a parent. I cannot make a promise that I'm going to walk in and change all these different things because I've got to convince other people. But I can promise that I will do everything I can to get other people convinced that we need to make some changes. I can promise that I am here to listen. I am here to be a voice for our students, our parents, and our staff. And I'm pretty stubborn, so when I want something to be done, I can be very convincing and consistent with what I want.
Ms. Green, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be right back with our next candidate. Hello, I'm W.T. Edmondson, and welcome to Focus. Freedom often causes unbelievable silence. Well, JCTV and Focus are pleased to provide the service of bringing you candidates that are running for the Jefferson City School Board. There are two open seats, and there are four candidates that are running. So we have decided to provide each candidate a 15-minute segment to talk about their campaign. And our first candidate is Ms. Stephanie Johnson. Welcome to Focus, Stephanie.
Thank you, W.T. I appreciate being here.
Starting out, who is Stephanie Johnson?
Well, I am a mom, two boys, older, 23 and 17. And I'm the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club, and I've held that role for the last eight years. You know, I've always had a career in nonprofit. I worked for United Way, Samaritan Center, the March of Dimes. But I really feel like all of that experience was getting me ready for this role at the Boys and Girls Club because I live it, breathe it. I'm passionate about what we do to serve kids in our community.
What was that epiphany that led you to say, "I'm running for the school board"?
Sure. Well, I was asked to run in a previous year, and it wasn't a right time, and I said no. But this year, I was actually in Columbia at a training on implicit bias. And it was just really an eye-opening experience for me. The lady who was the trainer, this wonderful author from the West Coast, said something that truly resonated with me. She said, "When an African-American child walks into a school and sees predominantly white teachers, white principals, and predominantly African-American custodians, that gives a child a message without saying anything." And I thought about our culture at the Boys and Girls Club. When you walk into a classroom at the Boys and Girls Club, it's almost all African-Americans leading the room. And I thought, "How can we take what we've built at the club and move that into our Jefferson City Public Schools"? So we started a dialogue with Dr. Seymour, the dean of education here at Lincoln, Dr. Lentikum, the superintendent, to find out how we can create this pipeline. And part of what is really important to me is to work to increase the diversity of our staff at the Jefferson City Public Schools. I don't think it's so much a position of, "We don't want diversity." I think our district doesn't know how to get it. And so I think it's the responsibility of individuals like myself, organizations like the Boys and Girls Club, Lincoln University, for us to come to the table with some out-of-the-box thinking to figure out what we can do to ensure that we have more diversity in our classrooms and in our leadership at the district.
So you would say that your experience working with the nonprofits and the Boys and Girls Club will all have basically prepared you for the next phase?
It has. I truly believe that. You know, for eight years, I've been building the Boys and Girls Club, trying to ensure that it is a safe, positive place for children. Once we got into a new building, we really established ourselves. Then we started really focusing on the academics of children. How are our children performing in the classroom? And the children that we serve at the Boys and Girls Club are underperforming the general population. And so we at the club are putting a lot of extra focus into what we can do. Not every child learns in the same way. Not every child walks into the schools ready to learn. A lot of the children in our community have food insecurities, social and emotional learning needs, mental health issues, substance abuse. You know, in order to allow a child to be a successful learner, we have to deal with some underlying issues first for many children. It's almost kind of like Maslow's hierarchy. We've got to solve this before we can get to this. And I think that it's our school district's responsibility as well as our whole community. I think the days of children walking into school, ready to learn, and all a school does is educate children, period, I think those days are over. I think it's a much more complex society that we live in now, and we are going to have to start dedicating more resources to ensuring that our children have the resources and the help they need to be learners. And I think we do that through more behavioral specialists, more counselors, just more boots-on-the-ground help in our buildings.
Okay. Going through the process of working with a group such as the board, how will you ensure that you do not become co-opted by the group think? How do you ensure that that doesn't happen?
My first and foremost priority are the children at the Boys and Girls Club. Now, I want to be there for all kids. That's my number-one priority, and it has been for years. I think the board is a great group of people, but what lacks on our school board is a voice for the children that come to the club and children like the kids at the club. I think we lack that. And I think it's very important, you know, in my work with the donors of the Boys and Girls Club and community leaders, I've established relationships with them, some respect and understanding. And my goal is to bring to the table an experience at the club where the people around the table will know that when I speak on something, or I may come with a different perspective, that that is coming from a place of experience and a place of authenticity. I'm not running because I have this hidden agenda, and I'm not running because I want to be a yes man. I am coming because I see what our children at the club deal with every day. I see the gaps in their learning, and I'm there for them.
Right now, as you have gone through the process of various interviews and forums and so forth, what have you learned from those environments?
I think what I've learned is, I would say that in listening to the other candidates, all four of us are truly authentic. I really believe regardless of where the candidates come from and their backgrounds, I think every one of us comes from a place of, "We want to make some changes for the better." Whether it's an incumbent who wants to see through some projects that have started, a candidate who really comes from a diverse cultural background and wants to see more of that, to a gentleman who is concerned about the literacy, the low level of literacy in our district, we are all very interested. And it's really been fascinating answering questions and dialoguing. And I'll tell you, the concerns of our community, there have been questions that have popped up in every forum. There are real concerns about the lawsuits in the district. There are real concerns about the behavioral health needs of our children, the lack of diversity. These are questions that we hear forum after forum. And I think that's, I'm pleased actually that our community is really looking at those issues and saying, "Okay, what's going on"? But I don't think it's enough just to sit and point fingers and, "What are we doing wrong"? You know, you've got to come with solutions. And that's, you know, I always tell my staff at the Boys and Girls Club, "You are welcome to come and complain about anything, but you've got to back it up with a solution." And it may not be a solution we can take, but I think for every, when you bring a problem, bring a solution.
What would you say are the three top issues confronting the Jefferson City Public School System immediately that you would address?
For me, number one is more behavioral health resources. I've had an opportunity to speak with some behavioral health specialists in the schools, and they need more of them. You know, they are pulled so thin that it's difficult for them to be effective with all that they have to do because it's just, it's an overwhelming task. More resources in that area. The second for me is, what is the work environment and culture for our teachers and our principals? The district, I commend them, did a survey of all their staff, asking a lot of different questions, everything from, "How do they feel the communication from the district offices", "What is the work environment"? They got this survey that I see as a baseline because some of the areas, the scores weren't very good. They could have been a lot higher. And I think if our teachers are unhappy, it's kind of like mom at home. If the teacher's not happy, no one's happy. I think we've got to focus to ensure that our teachers feel like they have a voice, and more importantly, that their voice is heard, that someone is listening. I commend the administrative team over at the board office for doing what they call rounding now. So all of them are assigned schools, and they go and they spend a little time in the classrooms, talking to the teachers, the staff, to find out what's going well, what can be better. The boots-on-the-ground teachers and principals, they have to know that the administrative office cares about their situation, is listening to them, and willing to take their advice. I mean, who knows better than teachers and principals on what our kids need? That's two. Third, going back to diversity. We have to have more minority, African-Americans, Hispanic, people of color in front of our kids. It is so important. I know that there's been some talk about, "Well, the best candidate should get the job." Well, I agree. All of our educators and principals should be top-notch, but I think we are missing the mark if we are not talking about and really doing something about the importance of having more minority educators in our system. Thirty percent of our children are African-American. That is one in three. If you compare that to the number of African-American staff, it's not even close.
What should the district policy be relative to discipline and zero tolerance?
You know, that's so difficult because, you know, I lean on my experience at Boys and Girls Club. We see everything from children that come and have behavior issues because there's no electricity in the house. Mom is always working and never home. And there are real obstacles in their life, and anyone in those environments are going to behave the way they do. To the other side, where we have kids whose parents lack some skills, and those kids are the boss in their house. They call the shots, they make the decisions, and so when they come to school and you have to have an authority figure, they clash with that, and every child in between. So I don't think there's a one fix for the behavior issues that we see in our schools. And I think that kind of leads to why we need more behavioral specialists. What will help this child over here is very different than what will help this child over here. So I think that we have to be cognizant of the diverse needs of the children, whether it is a flat, you know, just defiance versus an outcome of something else happening. I really think that we're seeing a lot of different things that manifest themselves in the same way, but the root origin is different.
Closing statements. Look at the camera and tell the citizens of Jefferson City why you feel that Stephanie Johnson is the proper person for this next seat.
Thank you. I would say to you that I am the right candidate for an open seat on the school board because I believe in all children. And my experience at the Boys and Girls Club has positioned me in a way that I understand the needs of so many of our children that walk through our doors. Over 50% of our children in the school district are on free or reduced lunch. That means some level of poverty is existing in over half the kids we serve. It's extremely important that on our Board of Directors, we have people that are a voice for those children, the children that come to the Boys and Girls Club, and the other children who have special needs, special environments where, you know, they need that little extra help in order to be successful. I believe that children, regardless of their socioeconomic background, regardless of their race, ethnicity, their culture, deserve a quality education. And I believe that my passion and experience will let me be a good voice for them.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, thank you very much.
Thank you, W.T. Appreciate it.
We'll be right back with our next candidate. Hello, I'm W.T. Edmondson, and welcome back to Focus. Well, we are interviewing the school board candidates. There are two open seats. There are four candidates that are running. And so we are giving each candidate an opportunity to stand before you and address their campaign, what they have learned, and what their positions are, and what they plan to do. Our next candidate is Ms. Lorelei Schwartz, and welcome to Focus.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Okay. Tell us, who is Lorelei Schwartz?
I am Lorelei Schwartz, and I was born and raised here in Jefferson City, Missouri. I'm a proud 1986 graduate of Jefferson City Public Schools. I went to Texas to school, met my husband, married him. We've been married 25 years. We have two sons who, one is in college and one will be graduating in May. I'm a business owner. I'm an accountant, and I'm a volunteer in this community. I volunteer for many different organizations right now on the school board and on the Capital Region Medical Center Board.
What was your epiphany that led you to wake up and say, "You know, I'm going to run for the school board"? What was your epiphany that led you to wake up and say, you know, I'm going to run for the school board?
It was, I was at a PTO meeting at the high school and I was listening to Bob James talk about the state of the high school and the frustrations that he was having a little bit with the policies not matching up with the procedures and how things were in such disarray. And I literally got up from that meeting with tears in my eyes disgusted that our school district had come to such a point. I, I was very frustrated as a school district that I love, a community that I love. And I had been sitting on the sidelines for many years saying, I'm not going to run for school board. And that, that's when I said, you know what? I don't have the expertise probably to be an educator, but I can sit on the board and make policies and help with procedures and to pave the way for those people with good ideas to do their job. I felt like he had some really good ideas and he was there to help find solutions and I wanted to be part of the solution.
Thank you. As you look at the current system, what would you identify as the top three issues currently confronting this district? And what would be your immediate recommendations to address those?
Well, we've identified that many of our students are behind in reading. And we have started an initiative to get every student at or above grade reading level. And we put some things in place and we, we have strategies in place, but we're constantly monitoring them. And I think that they are starting to take effect and, and be effective. Our teachers are telling us that they're, the Eye Ready Program to help them identify where kids are so that they can meet them where they are is, have been a good tool. And so I, I want to see that through. We still have issues with behaviors in the classroom. And we've also started to develop some strategies other than just pure discipline. You know, a little bit of, again, finding out kids where they are, where they are and meeting them where they are to help design some strategies for those kids to get them out of these behaviors. And the last thing, which I, I want to continue with the facilities planning. I was on the coach, I was co-chaired the facilities, the long range planning facilities committee and we've built the second high school now, but we laid out a plan for 20 years. And we wanted to purposely be systematic about how we attack those things. We still have overcrowding in all of our elementary and middle schools. Some are more overcrowded than others, but we have to continue up this plan. We can't just put it on the shelf or we're going to be in crisis again like we were with the high school. So I want to ensure that those three things stay moving forward.
When we speak of, I've heard over time of the individuals within the community as well as school board members and candidates for the school board speak of diversity and retention. What is your position on the systems addressing diversity issues and the issue of retention?
You mean diversity through, among our staff?
Overall?
Yeah, well, you know, we have a very diverse student population. There's no doubt about it. And we don't have a staff that reflects that. We've been, I know that HR has been trying different things to recruit a more diverse body so that, in, in all areas of the schools. And we recently started working with Dr. Seymour here at Lincoln for a Grow Your Own program where we could start identifying some of our students who might be interested in getting in the education field and getting them here through the Lincoln Education Program and then bringing them back to teach in our, in our system. It's hard to recruit people to come to Jefferson City. I found this out even working on the Capital Region Board when we hired our CEO there. It is very difficult to make Jefferson City attractive to people. We asked one candidate, what's the best thing about Jefferson City? And he said, it's close to St. Louis. And I thought, that's very sad, but really it takes somebody with ties here. And so that's what I love about the Grow Your Own program. And we're trying to grow your own, doing the Grow Your Own program with bringing teachers out of the teaching staff into the principal's staff. And, and we think that helps retain those people when they already have roots in the community to stay here. We have lost a lot of very veteran teachers and we have very new staff. And so now what we need to do is cultivate them so that they do grow and stay with us for a long time. And I think we're trying to do that with our professional development and tapping into how they're feeling and what resources we can provide to make them successful.
What is your position on zero tolerance?
I don't believe in zero tolerance. I believe that each kid is different. I mean, obviously, you know, kids have to be punished for their behavior. However, I, I think that we need to do a little bit more than that. And we, I, because I don't know that just zero tolerance and here's the punishment is going to fix the behavior. I think you need to dig deeper and find out what's really going on with this kid. And is there something we can do to help fix their issue? Because I think that the, the bad, poor behavior is just a symptom of what's really going on. And if we can get those kids in touch with some of the resources they need, I think the behaviors will be fixed. I don't know that we need to discipline them.
Let me back up to, to a question that you just kind of addressed. So the question is this. In your dealing with not only the school board, but other organizations that you've participated on, can you tell us a time when you displayed leadership that caused the group to shift and go in the direction that you presented?
Yeah, I can tell you that happened just last month with the drug testing policy. Our drug testing policy is, works against children with little resources. The drug testing policy says that if you fail a drug test, a random drug test during the year, you're going to lose 40% of your season. Now you can shave that down to 20% of your season if you can get yourself into drug counseling and pass a drug test clean. Well, do you have any idea how hard it is to get into a mental health professional? A drug testing counselor? And if you're on Medicaid, there's no way you're going to get in to see one before the season's even over. And so the, the one person that they recommended lives out in Lake Mykeye and you have to pay cash. Well, how is a kid supposed to get to Lake Mykeye and have $60 cash for all the? And so I was adamant about that and I said, I, I will die on this one. We will fix this or, or I'm going to go down in flames, but I'm going to, I'm going to die trying because, and so what they said, they looked at, I had just asked them to look at it, see how effective it really is. And they made some changes to it. They said, our bulk drug testing is very ineffective. And we're going to continue to random drug test, but those kids who can't afford to seek drug counseling, we have an organization that's helping over at J C A C. And they're going to put those kids in touch with that organization so that they can receive the counseling that they need and still be able to participate in their activities. And I, I think that I was able to get that done with the staff and I think the school board members supported me on that.
What strategies do you bring to the board as far as trying to address the issue? Is, you know, you identify the issue of retention, the issue of diversity. What strategies have you pushed forward or will you put forward in your next term to address that issue, those two issues, retention and the issue of diversity?
Well, you know, I, I'm not an HR person, so I don't really know how we attract a diverse body. But I love the Grow Your Own program. And I, I have talked to Shelby Scarborough about that multiple times and she is working with Dr. Seymour. And I love that program and I'm going to continue to ask about that. And Shelby frequently provides us reports now, not frequently, but we had one within the last four months of, okay, here were the jobs that were available. Here were the applicant, here was the applicant pool and the breakdown of, of race and gender in the applicant pool. And here's how many we hired of that applicant pool. And I thought that was very informative to us and we will continue to seek out that information to see if we are moving that needle at all as far as attracting diverse. But again, it's hard to, to attract people to come to Jefferson City. So you have to find some people who have roots in this area already. And as far as retaining the people that we have, I think it's just critical for us to be, I don't, I feel like maybe, and what I've heard from some of our teachers is that in the past, when there were initiatives put forth by the board office, there were not professional development and resources to follow those initiatives. So the teachers were a little bit left on their own to figure out how to, how to implement these things. And so I think it's really important and I think that we've gotten much better in the last two or three years with our professional development. And we're not giving the same professional development to every school. We're letting the building say, what does your building need for professional development? And I think that that's going to help the teachers feel like they have buy-in and they're going to want to stay. And I think that we've done, getting better at asking teachers their opinion instead of just dictating to them what's going to be done. Because they know better than anybody, you know? And so it's really about working together. We need to quit working against each other in this town, in this community and within the school district itself. We need to figure out how to create partnerships. We need to utilize Lincoln more. It is beyond me how the community in Lincoln haven't been more in partnership. And I've grown up on Moral Drive, all, all my life I've been by Lincoln. And it's just, you know, we need to figure out a way to work together.
You spoke about zero tolerance. What should be the district's policy, discipline possible policy? And making sure that that policy is administered fairly?
Well, first of all, we need to get more consistent within amongst our staff. You know, what's offensive to you may not be offensive to me. And so we need to get a little consistency and, and education to our staff. I had some experience with this, with a young man that was living with us. And he got sent to the office and they were going to send him home. And I went in and talked to the teacher, talked to the principal, talked to the student. And we figured that that's, being out of school is not the best thing. Let's put him in a transition room during the class where we're having a problem with the teacher so we can get a little cooling off period, but he can go to his other classes where he's not having a problem. And then maybe together between the teacher and the student, we can come to some compromises. Okay, you're not going to have this behavior anymore, but you're not going to react this way anymore. And, and it was a great solution, but it just takes sitting down for all parties, I think, to communicate, understand where each other was coming from and then make adjustments. But I think all parties need to make adjustments.
Okay. Is there anything that you, as far as when you was preparing to come for the interview that you said, I'm going to make sure that I speak to this?
Well, you know what? I think that we're talking a lot about, you know, we, in the forums that we've been in, we've talked a lot about the lawsuits. We've talked a lot about diversity. And obviously we have work to do. There, I am not saying that we don't have work to do and I'm willing to tackle those things and have those conversations. However, we have a lot of successes. And we've had a lot of successes in the last four years that I'm really proud of that I got to be part of those solutions. I was just one small part, but you know, our APR is, we were barely accredited four years ago. We were at 70 APR and now we're at 87. We're obviously doing some things right. And I think that we've got some really good momentum. And I think the momentum is good that we can tackle some of these other problems. And I want to continue being part of the solution and doing my part to be part of the solution.
Okay, thank you. Closing statement. Can look at the camera and tell the citizens of Jefferson City why they should mark an X by your name?
You know, I've been involved in, in the Jefferson City Public Schools for well over 20 years. I've been in every PTO and PTA of every school my kids been involved in. I've been helped with the citywide PTO. I've been in part of the booster clubs and the Jeff City Public Schools Foundation and the Long Range Planning Committee and the Committee to Explore Full Day Kindergarten. I am extremely passionate and love this school district. I, I am not capable of doing some jobs. I, I'm not trained to be a teacher, I'm not trained to be an administrator. But I do think that as a community member who has a great deal of passion for this community and the kids in this community, I can offer something at the board level. And I would appreciate your vote on April 2nd.
Ms. Schwartz, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be right back with our next candidate. Hello, I'm W T Edmondson and welcome to Focus. Freedom often causes unbelievable silence. Well, we are in the process of having a conversation with our last candidate that's running for the school board. There are two seats open for candidates running. And each candidate has been, have been given 15 minute segments to talk about their campaign. Our guest is Mr. Stephen Brown. Welcome to Focus.
Thank you.
Okay. Who is Stephen Brown?
Well, I'm a, I'm pretty much a blue collar kind of guy. Worked with my hands most of my life until I got old enough to know better. And got a little education, went into the insurance industry, married to the same woman nine years. And Steve Brown's a pretty happy guy, pretty fortunate.
What was your epiphany that led you to say, I'm going to run for the school board?
That's a great question. I, I've been watching and reading the news like, like most people should, but I, but I'm maybe a little more intense and dedicated to it. And I saw the, the two issues came up. One was disciplines in the school and the other issue was the lawsuits. And I, I just, those two things, in fact, and I'm retired. I have time to give back to the community. And I saw those issues and I thought, you know, people that know me say that I've got some common sense. So I thought, well, I'm going to, I'm going to see if I can help the community. And those, those issues brought that forth. I just threw my hat in the ring.
What have you learned from the various forums and interviews that you have been involved in throughout your campaign?
A lot. The, the meetings that we've had at the city town hall last night. I was with the NAACP a couple nights ago. And then one other meeting that we had, a candidate forum. I'm not privy to all the details and numbers that some of the other candidates are privy to. I did not know some of these things. I'm, I'm, I'm the outside guy. And I, I don't have all the answers, but I've got some questions. And the, the facts and figures that, that have, that have come forth that I was just not aware of. I didn't know that the population of the school was 30% minority. Not a clue, not a clue. I didn't know that we had 1,400 employees in the Jeff City School District. I just didn't know. I didn't know that there was no dress code between all the schools that the principals shot from the hip. Each different school had their own kind of separate rules on, on, and I, some of the things that have come forth that I just didn't know. Because I don't have a child in the school and I had no reason to go to PTA meetings or attend a school board meetings until, like I said, the epiphany occurred. When, when I kept seeing this and seeing this and going, you know, I can complain about it. I can whine about it or I can do something about it. And so, but yeah, I've learned quite a bit and I'm, I'm sure there's a lot more to learn, a lot more to learn.
What experience and expertise will you bring to the school board?
Well, I spent 30, 32 years negotiating. I was in the claims department of insurance. People just say, like to say, well, you were in the insurance business. Well, yeah, but I was in the, the man's side of insurance business, you know? And, and the claim side of it, you're dealing constantly with adversarial situations. And people are distressed, you have to comfort them. Sometimes you have to disagree with them because the Because you don't always have the right answer that they want to hear. So I bring that, the fact that, you know, that, that I've, I've seen hard times. I've seen hard times and I know people struggle and they need to be helped. And the kids, it's about the kids. It's not about personalities on the school board or in the community even. Because you're not going to make all the parents happy. The change in time, I think, showed that, that people weren't happy. But the science and the practicality of it dictated that we do so. But I think I bring just, like, all young people are not dumb. And all older people are not smart. But somewhere in between there, I lie, you know? Because I am an old guy. But I bring that type of maturity and experience.
What, what grade would you give to the school system relative to safety as you know it?
Well, as I know it today, the system here, I think they're doing everything they, they can. I, I would give it a grade of between one and 10. I'd, I'd score it somewhere around eight. Because there's always something else you can do. There's always something. You just got to keep looking at it. You can't, you can't relax and say it's all, it's all okay. You gotta, you gotta keep looking at it. It's never going to be 100%.
Tell me, what do you see as the top three issues facing the public school system as you see it? And what would be your immediate response to those issues?
Well, boy, top three. Well, one of the issues right now, which is the, the elephant glaringly in the room, obvious is, is this, the suits that are going on, the human resource problem. And some of that also points directly towards the lack of, of hiring, where we don't have diversity in the school system. I don't know how to correct that. I don't know if it is 100% correctable. But we need to push towards the human resources, our hiring. I think, and these two are the same thing. Support for the teachers and discipline. Discipline should be fair across the board. And when a teacher does discipline a child for whatever, whatever that discipline will be, whether it's a timeout or in, in-school suspension, the teacher needs to be supported 100%. Teacher ain't always going to be right. But let's, let's support those teachers so they know that they're not going to get immediately hammered. They may get us talking too later down the, but we need to support these teachers. And we need discipline. And, and the human resources, we've had some problems, obvious. One suit's one too many. It's a small, 1,400 employees and we got, what, seven out of 1,400 that are unhappy? That's pretty good. I, but still, one's too many, one's too many.
What is your position on zero tolerance?
I grew up in an age where I took a gun to school. I took, I took my shotgun to school because I had dove hunted that morning. And I, I've heard other people say that, but I'm not kidding. I, I mean, I'm not saying it for shock value. That's the way we grew up. Guns were not an issue like they are now. Things have changed. And I wish I could put my finger on zero tolerance on fighting in school, not just guns. But zero tolerance takes the judgment factor out of things. I don't think zero tolerance is a good policy. I think you should look at, look at the problem and make a decision on the facts. Not just, you know, zero tolerance to me is, is, I just, it's kind of like fat and voluptuous. Somewhere in between, you know, lies the truth there. But zero tolerance to me is, 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 it's not fair to the system, the school, and it's not fair to the, to the students.
In your various roles in organizations, you say you come from the insurance industry. Can you tell us of a time when, through your leadership, you were able to steer that group to a position that you held versus a position that, that the way it was going? Based upon your leadership on that issue?
Well, boy, I tell you, that's another tough question. I, I mean, I am a legend in my own mind. But I have, I've participated in, I've been the commandant of the Marine Corps League. I've held a lot of positions of, of leadership. Now, whether I turned the organization, we, we built the league building while I was commandant. We did not have a building. And now we do. That was done during my period of, of period of power. And, and, and I'm involved with Toys for Tots. And now that has become a long, long, long ways. I don't think I had a real issue in that. But, but I was one of the ones that started it here in town, you know, that got it going. And then there was, I'm involved with the Sea Cadets, which is a great outfit, by the way. Sea Cadets, a lot of people don't know about them. They train out at Ike Skelton. And I train, I drill there once a month. And I would like to think that I've had an effect on some of those young men and women. It's both boys and girls, their lives. But as far as concrete, you know, you know what? I, I think I've had a lot of people help me along the way.
If you're successful going onto the school board, how will you go about ensuring that you don't fall into group think?
I, well, you need to ask my friends that same thing. I'm not much of a follower. I'm an independent thinker. And I'm not bashful about telling people what I think. I, I don't fall into cliques or cliches very well at all. I'm, I'm pretty much like, say, a march to my own drummer kind of guy. I still wear short hair.
You, you touched on diversity. How do you see? Let me say it this way. How do you believe diversity and retention should be prioritized within the system? And how do you go about addressing the issue of diversity and retention?
You know, talking with, with the folks at the NAACP, it really, it really made me see things kind of a little different in, in some way. It kind of changed some of my attitude. I still feel that you just need to hire the best person for the job. You shouldn't just deliberately go out looking for a minority deliberately. But with that being said, your HR department, the places that they are recruiting, and I don't know how they do it. See, I'm, 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 I have to get into the loop before I can fix the loop. But what I would like to think that I could do, I'm not sure how much push and power I'll have, what kind of gravitas this comes with. But I would like to think that they could recruit from areas. Now, we're not going to get people from New York City to come in here maybe. But there's got to be closer communities and stuff where we could find qualified minorities and concentrate on that, you know, to recruit. Basically, I'll say it as blunt as this. If, if, if here's a, a white guy that's, that's got A, B, and C, and here's a black guy that's got A, B, and C, we need diversity. The black guy's going to get the job because of that. But if the black guy's only, only got A, B, white guys, or Hispanic guy even, has got A, B, C, that's going to get the job. Because the kids come first. The kids come first, not diversity or anything else, the kids. And we want good teachers. But I think where should be a push, HR should know the wishes of what, you know, we, we need to do this because it's the right thing to do.
Let me, let me ask you a question based on your, based on your, your response. I'm somewhat of an advocate.
No.
And so, and so the, and I've heard this, this comment a number of times in various spaces that I found myself. When you're talking about qualifications in general, these qualifications, but then when you talk about qualifications and looking for a minority applicant, the caveat is always qualified.
Yes.
But you hardly ever hear that when you're saying, well, we need to go out and find someone for a position. It's, we need, we need to hire someone from the general population. But whenever a minority is in the mix, that caveat is always there, qualified. And so I think that's one of the areas that HR and everyone else have to be cognizant of, that, that exists. You have to be across the board. You're looking for qualified people regardless as to who they are, whether they are black or white. But when we're talking about minorities, the word qualified seem to always eat into the conversation. So that's, 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 that's one of the things that I just wanted to throw out there.
And I agree with you. It does. I'm guilty as charged.
Other than those areas that you identified as the top three areas of concern for you, when you were preparing for this interview, was there something that you said, I'm going to make sure that I throw this one in there?
You know, there wasn't. There wasn't. I, I, I find, I find these interviews a little stressful. I do. I'm not used to it at all. It's that 15 minutes of fame is kind of, everybody wants it. But I, I've never sought it. And, and I'm not seeking, I'm just thinking that I could help, that I could be a help on the board, a balancing factor. Because I am blue collar. I, I'm, I'm not from academia. I'm as intelligent, but I don't have all the polish. And maybe, maybe some unpolish will do good.
Okay, if you can look in the camera and tell the candidates why they should put an X by Stephen Brown's name when they go into the booth?
Well, because I'm charming. And besides that, I am dedicated to the school system. I will be. And if I don't do a good job, come three years, fire me.
Okay. Well, Mr. Brown, thank you very much.
You bet.
Okay. Your participation in this political process will determine who will be placed on the school board for the next term. History has taught us that the importance of being involved in the process. If you're not involved in the process, don't complain. Silence is an act of consent. Our responsibility is to speak up and speak out. Our challenge is to continue speaking up and speaking out, even when the powers that be wish you to be silent. Our voice matters. Democracy is our voice. We'll see you next time. Remember to vote on April the 2nd, 2019. That's Tuesday, April the 2nd, 2019. We'll see you next time. God bless.